Please join me in a word of prayer. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for your presence with us here tonight. We pray that you will be in our minds and hearts as we're making decisions for the community. We thank you for our community, for the residents here. We thank you for the leadership that we have and for the building that we're in. And Lord, we just thank you for all the blessings that you have given to this community. Amen. Okay, so it's 7:00 PM, so I will call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you take role models please?
Mike Connell.
Here.
Chad Kohler.
Here.
U.S. Deputy Leader, here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Neersam even.
Here.
Looking for approval of the agenda?
I hope that the agenda be adopted as part of the second.
We have a motion from Mindy, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Looking now for reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the January 5th, 2023 regular meeting.
Sorry.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion canceled. In our pre-approved reports slash presentations, we'll now hear from District 7 County Commissioner Tom Emery. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you putting me on your agenda. I'm in my first month as county commissioner. At this time, we had our first meetings last week that I've been involved in. I'm appointed to the Public Health Committee of the Commission, and I am also the courts and public safety area. I'm on that committee as well. I am a voting member of the Public Health Committee, and I'm also a voting member on the solid waste management area. So those are the two areas. You may recall, when I came and spoke to you during my campaign, I expressed a good deal of interest in zoning. Now, that isn't so much an issue to you folks since you have your own zoning. But of course, neither Perry Township nor Woodhull Township do their own zoning. They're dependent on the county. There were some issues, but I didn't get appointed there. But I will be attending the meetings. We have Monday of the week that we meet, which is the second week of the month. The zoning issues are taken up. I will be attending those committee meetings as well as the ones that I'm assigned to. I wanted to say a little bit about how I view my relationship to both the city of Perry, Village of Morris, and the townships. We're all part of local government, but under the state law, you as a city and Morris as a village are given responsibility in certain areas. And it isn't really a hierarchy with the county. I mean, you have certain things that you do, and it's your responsibility. And frankly, state law is that the county on certain things cannot interfere with what cities and villages do or townships do. So it's not as if you got the federal government here, and then the state government, and then you've got county government and local government, cities and villages and townships. You have certain areas that you can function in. The county, there are different areas we could act legislatively, where you can pass ordinances, and the county can as well. However, the county is quite kind of boxed in, is limited what we can do. One of the provisions of state law is that as a county, we cannot interfere with what cities, villages, do or townships because certain areas are yours and we can't get involved in it. And of course, we can't do anything that is in conflict with state law. The state legislature, and the way things function in Michigan, mainly this House of Representatives passed most of the laws of general application that we all have to deal with, and of course, you have to comply with those as well. So my desire is to, with those restrictions in mind, is be aware of what's going on in the city of Perry, Perry Township, Woodhull Township as well, and of course, the village. So I will endeavor to attend at least one of your monthly meetings if circumstances dictate. Otherwise, it will be more depending what's going on. So I just, and I think it is important for me to know what's going on up here so we know the limitations of what we can do and not do on a county level. Greg Radoor is the chairman of the county for the next year. We elected him last week. We had our first meetings last week. So I will try to keep in touch with you as much as possible, and you're welcome. If you see anything that's troublesome to you, you're welcome to let me know. But we all are going to have to function in our areas to do things, and you're fully capable of handling some things on your own. But I would appreciate knowing about it. All the year, I've lived in Perry Township since 1976. But most of my, every day I got on Old 78 or 69 in heaven in Lansing, all the years I worked for the Attorney General's Office. And when I was in private practice, I went to East Lansing for that. So I never spent a lot of time too troubled about Chawassee County and what was going on, but obviously, that is something that's primary for me now. At the meetings last week, as I say, we elected chairman, vice chairman. It's Gary Holzhausen. I know Gary's been around a long time. Former, he was a former drink commissioner. But Greg Radoor, I think has only been on the commission for a couple of years now. And so I think I'm beginning to become acquainted with the other commissioners. I know that the zoning issue has arisen down in, or I guess up, Bennington Township, Woodhull Township, and Perry Township. So that's something I'm going to be concerned with in the planning of zoning. I think you're all aware that the county, before I came on board, did approve the contract to rehabilitate the courthouse. And so that will be going forward. Interestingly enough, at last week's meeting Thursday, they had a company come in and talk about a system to, even though we'd already, that had already been passed, I wasn't involved in it. And they were talking about putting in a system that would control viruses in the courthouse. They didn't get to the point of talking about costs, about saying that it would be, because there's, the COVID issue is still with us, as I'm sure you well know. So a company representative came in and talked to us. But my concern is, we've already passed the contract. It did not include this kind of air purification process. And basically, what it would do is it prevents, viruses are not really live things like bacteria are, but it, I forget the term, the guy from the company proposing issues, but it just prevents them from spreading and acting on various people. But it's like our, the COVID virus is so pervasive everywhere, and many of us apparently are developing the immunity to it or to the severe forms of it. Yet frankly, no action was taken on that, none was proposed. But you may hear, you may get information from similar companies that would want to come into the City Hall here and put in something with the heating system that would control our stuff, so you may hear about that. And I guess that's about it at this point. My first official votes were just on who was going to be chairman and vice chairman and the various committee assignments. But I look forward to staying in touch with you. I feel because I'm on the county commission now, I really have a responsibility to stay and coordinate with what you folks are doing here at the city as well as the townships and the village.
We appreciate that. Do you, are you asking for questions now? Can we ask council? Council, does anyone have any questions for Tom? Or Devin, do you have any questions for Tom? We really appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you. Thanks. Our next report is from our, one of our city CISA representatives, Tim. Was chairman, are you still chairman?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, so as Sue said, I am mayor.
You can call me Sue.
As Sue and I go back way back to our teaching of piano.
I was just going to say, can I tell them you were one of my piano students when you were little?
No, you always used to get mad at me because I never.
You never.
Played by ear. So yes, as Sue mentioned, I am the chairman, current chairman. This was voted in our annual meeting this month to continue that for another year at least. And also, as she said, I am one of two reps, and obviously, our other rep is council's own Bob, who also sits as the chairperson of our personnel committee. So Bob's doing a little super job there. If you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of take us back to some facts about the board and the fire department, and then talk about some of the stuff we did in 2022 that's good and some things that we'd like to do better. Some of the stuff you might already know, but CESA, or the Southwest Chawassee Rescue Service, is a 10-member board. We meet the third Monday of each month at 7:00 at the Township Hall. So I'd like to see you there if you can. Mindy's been showing up there every month, so I'd have to go see that. We do hold nine contracts for fire and EMS service around our local surrounding. We operate with about a $1.8 million budget, of which about 1.5 of that is for EMS and $300,000 is fire. We are a combination department, which just means that we have paid-on-call and full-time staff. We operate under the name of Perry Area Fire Rescue, as you know. We operate out of four stations. One here in Perry that operates both fire and EMS. One in the Village of Morris that operates just fire only. And then two, just EMS only, one in Vernon Township and one in the city of Durant. We cover about 90 square miles for fire and 200 square miles for EMS. So a pretty big service area. We have 35 paid-on-call firefighters, 18 full-time firefighters. Last year, we ran about 2,000 calls. Let me pull that up real quick so I give you the right number. 2,051 EMS calls and 180 fire calls. So in the city of Perry, we ran 294 calls. 29 of them fired, and the balance of that EMS. Either ALS calls, BLS calls, and sometimes non-transport calls. So a pretty active fire department as well. We have a number of achievements that we'd like to talk about, or I'd like to talk about tonight. We start off the year, actually, we ended last year, I'm sorry, 2021, with a vote from our local full-time members, or I'm sorry, our full-time members. And they voted to organize to a union, and as we talked about, I think maybe last year sometime. The beginning of the year, we negotiated in good faith with that organization, and May 16th, we ratified the contract, which we were very happy for. And I think we did, I thought it was kind of rhetoric time. Three months, never haven't done it, brought it to the table, and it seemed to be working real well. So what was formed was the International Association of Firefighters Local 50-360. Again, they have 18 members running EMS out of those three stations. Some of the things that we accomplished through the year, we did have a, one of our primary engines out of Station 1 was nose-down field chassis, the chassis was cracked. Opted to put that into a repair instead of trying to replace it at the cost of over half a billion dollars. So we purchased a used engine for a very good price, put that into service with some minor upgrades, repaired that chassis, did that upgrade for about $70,000. So we saved a ton of money versus buying a new engine to put it in service. So we're very happy about that. And now with that engine that we took back out of service, the one that we purchased very cheap, we are just making some upgrades to that and kind of using that as a squat now, which is going to replace another old dilapidated vehicle that needed to be replaced. That was exciting, got that done. Another big thing was we received an order of radios, handheld radios, from the 911. It was all 911-funded. So I don't know how many, maybe Chad could help me on how many radios.
I think we got 15.
15.
15 of them.
Yeah, so pretty good addition and no cost to us. So it's always a good thing when you don't have to spend a lot and get good toys. So we upgraded a tanker, our tanker 2 as well. Just put some new lights to meet the new requirements for lighting, safety, some repairs in the house and things like that. It cost $10,000 to try and get another number of years out of that as well to try and save from $300. I think our last tanker, we paid $350,000 for. So the more time we can get out of these older ones, the better offer we can make. We received a grant for $160,000 for EMS equipment and training, and we have managed to spend all of that. So all that stuff is in place or will be very soon. We, near the end of the year, did some officer appointments. Got that, it was kind of lingering for a while. We got some things in place and finally got that done before the end of the year. Bob and his Personnel Committee is working on a number of personnel, I'm sorry, administrative upgrades and policies and procedures and things like that, contracts to try and get us current with the times. So that's working good. And the very last thing of the year, we purchased all-new SCBA equipment, kind of forced a little bit on OSHA visit, which wasn't the best thing to finish off the year with. But OSHA came in near the end of the year on a employee complaint, and they found several things, most of which were just kind of fixed straight on the spot or very quickly after. One of them was this, the board did opt to purchase 24 new SCBAs with spare bottles and spare masks. So that was a good thing. One of the things that's hot topic right now on us, and you've probably heard some discussion about this, is the household assessment. And although we're not ready to talk about that, I just wanted to bring that up, that there was some concerns with a lot of things, obviously with inflation and things going up, cost of equipment, cost of medical supplies, cost of all these things, things going up higher than what we expected. So there's some discussion about that coming. We're working on presentations right now, trying to get to you folks in the near future so we can get you with rest of those things. 2023 looks real good for us. If we can get things ironed out, get some of Bob's stuff going with policies and procedures and contracts, and get some organizational stuff done. If we keep plugging away, we should be pretty well set. I don't know if Bob wants to add anything.
He covered everything. Seems to be going in the right direction at the moment.
Yep, there's times when we've had questions, and we try to work through them as a board. And I think we're working pretty good right now together trying to get things moving. Hopefully, we can keep everybody happy, content. I don't know if that's possible.
I'm just so happy to hear that things are moving forward, that you're going in the right direction. It seemed for a while things were not.
Yep.
And I'm just very pleased with hearing both of you say that.
Yeah, we had some downturn there for a little bit, and some frustrated, some things were frustrating, people were getting frustrated. So kind of grabbing the reins and getting things going in the right direction, steering the ship in the right direction. Right, Bob?
Trying to.
Does anybody have questions for Tim?
I very much appreciate the hard work both of you have been putting in. I know you've been putting in a lot of time and effort and energy, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our CESA department is so very important to our community.
Yep, we're looking to support the best we can and provide a good quality service. And I think we're doing that. We just got some little bumps we're trying to.
They prove every day how professional they are, and we need to appreciate them.
Thank you.
Like I said, it's a service you'd never want to come to your house.
But you're glad to serve.
Well, when it gets there, it better be a good service.
Yes.
Thank you, Tim.
And they are.
I don't see that we have anybody here for public comments. I'll just ask that very quickly before we move into our public hearing. Is there anyone here for public comment tonight? Moving into then our public hearing regarding our five-year parks plan.
Can you call the time?
Call the time? The time is now, 7:23 PM. Megan, you want to lead that discussion? How are we going to do that?
I don't know.
We didn't really talk about that. Is there anyone here for public discussion or topics regarding our five-year parks plan? Megan's handing out the five-year parks and recreation plan.
Thank you.
Anybody interested in five-year park plans?
Megan is our city treasurer. She's also on the Parks Committee and a very big part, might I say that? Chad, Chad's our chair of the Parks Committee. And Bob's on that committee, and Mike's on that committee. But Megan has done a lot with this, and I'll let you go ahead and tell about this.
Yep, so I think we've already kind of gone over the volleys of the plan. We went over the draft last month. So it was out for a 30-day public comment. We did receive one comment on the plan as a whole from one community member. And I did incorporate that where it was applicable. I would say the biggest concern in the public comment I received was funding of all these projects that we're proposing and would like to achieve. So I added a new, I see what number it was. I added Objective C, which is funding. And that's just kind of to focus us on prioritizing how we will fund the projects proposed in the plan, both at the council level, the committee level, and the community level. Budgeting, seeking out grants, crowdfunding, and seeking donations as we can to help make sure that the plans set in place here can actually come to fruition. So that was, I think, the only actual change I made to the plan based on the public comment. A lot of support for the playground improvements and the ballfield improvements. So the next step tonight after our public hearing is that council will then, a little bit later in the meeting, move to adopt the plan, which will allow me to file it with the DNR before February 1st. Once it's filed with the DNR by February 1st, it kind of goes with their review period. And then after that's complete, sometime in the spring, it'll all goes well. We'll be eligible to apply for grades. Side note, I still have not received any determination on the Spark grade application. It's still in DNR review. Timeframe for that was end of January.
I was just going to ask you. Well, we talked about it the other day, so.
Any questions from the public or from council regarding this plan for Mindy or for Megan?
Another requirement of the plan when we file it with the DNR is that we transmit it to the county level. So the Parks and Property Commission, I believe it's called, is part of the county commissioners. And then there's a Michigan Association of Regents, and they just kind of coordinate regional activity. So the biggest impact, I think, in our plan at both those levels will be our non-motorized trail plans. Something that will connect to other communities in the county and maybe beyond.
It does mention in the plan here that the vote in November did pass a village, so we'll be addressing that with a resolution here next month. But that shows, I think, public support for this plan. I guess we'll then close our public hearing regarding the five-year parks and recreation plan. We'll address this again later on in the agenda.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Can you call the time?
Calling the time at 7:29 PM. Calling the time at 7:29 PM. Any communications, Devin?
I guess the only thing I will add, because it's not a report, when we get down to items for next agenda, I will let you know that I'm working on contracts for Pancho Gas for the city. We've come up with a better deal, they're in front of the attorney to review the contracts, so I'll be submitting those to you. And the poverty exemption, that's an annual resolution that has to be approved by council will be in front of you in the first meeting in February. And a place for the next resolution to be the one dealing with fireworks for your first reading will also be a consideration on that. It's a three-pager and with anything else, I thought that was a longer one, it will be identified by itself. After that, it looks like they're one-pagers, there'll be two ordinances each meeting after, if not the last one, there'll be four, because there's two repeals to that one. So these ordinances that finance and, I'm sorry, the ordinance committee have taken care of are going to get on the agendas quickly.
Thank you, Devin.
Yep.
I just wanted to give you the status report that I got from our grant writer, James Hissong, that came today by email. He said the grant has been approved, as we were told a couple of weeks ago. Now we are waiting for further communication from the federal agency that will issue the award. They will process the earmark and send a non-competitive application that will need to be completed before they'll send a formal grant agreement. So we'll just keep in touch with him. If we get it, he'll keep in touch with us if he gets it, but he'll help us fill that out and get it turned in. I did want to let you know also that Larry and I are going to be attending a meeting with Senator Peters' representative Tuesday in Duran regarding our water extension project to talk about funding and possible funding that may come back around this year. I don't think we'll be there too long, but we will go. Do we have committee reports for tonight?
Just a quick reminder that the ordinance committee will be meeting next Thursday, the 26th, at 10:00 AM here in council chambers to continue our discussion on a few ordinances that we're continuing to work on. And as Devin just indicated, we're going to review first reading of one tonight and have probably a varying length, five or six in the hopper that we'll be bringing forward. We've got two or three more that we're working on, one being the animal and pet ordinances we have within the city. We're looking with the coordinator of Perry's FFA activity to make certain any changes that we would entertain are consistent with what the FFA objectives are. We'll be talking about that next Thursday. Thank you.
Any other committee reports for tonight?
I have our report for personnel committee. Kevin Tyler, our DPW superintendent, had his 90-day evaluation and excellent reports. Every which way you go, he's really himself and is doing a very good job getting all of his education in to be able to take over everything completely. And because our budget doesn't really allow us for a wage increase at this time, we elected to talk to you guys about giving him a week's vacation as well as 16 hours of personal time to just show our appreciation for his efforts and he was appreciative to have us do that too. So we're in the works figuring out what to do in order to accommodate that, so, and we also need your approval.
Justin's here, so I'll just say his name. Justin's working on that.
I am, yeah. We have that working here to discuss about presenting to council a policy revision that would affect the new DPW superintendent.
So we probably should be able to have something before the next meeting.
Yeah, I think it'd be right for the next meeting to have a approval.
Very good, thank you, Justin.
You're welcome.
Any other committee reports? Okay, moving into presentation and approval of bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and the payment be authorized.
We have a motion from Chad seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have no old business, but moving into new business, we are going to need to go into a closed session so that council can confer with our city attorney regarding a legal matter. So I'm looking for a motion to take us into closed session.
I move that council will go into closed session to discuss attorney-client communication.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that? Oh, this has to be a roll call, though. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Steve?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Do you need a minute to go into closed session? So motion carried. We will, council and Justin, I've asked Megan to join us, we are going to go into the council boardroom. Motion should go back into regular session.
I move that we hold a regular session, counsel.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify. No, I'm sorry, we have to do a roll call. The time is 8:15. All right, and Ted Cool?
Yes.
Maybe Galvally?
Yes.
Larry Labor?
Yes.
Bob Porter?
Yes.
Steve Rollis?
Yes.
Matt Cottle?
Yes.
In favor. So we return to regular session at 8:16. Moving to mayor's appointments, we have a person who's agreed to serve on our I-69 International Trade Corridor and it's Randy Coffey. I'm so glad. And he was happy.
Good.
So I'm happy, I hope he stays happy. So I'm looking for a motion to approve my appointment of Randy Coffey to the I-69 International Trade Corridor as city representative for a term to expire January 2025.
I move that we accept and approve the mayor's appointment of Randy Coffey to the I-69 International Trade Corridor as city representative for a term to expire January 2025.
Second.
Motion from Steve, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We previously heard from Megan and the committee regarding the five-year park plan. Now we're looking for possible adoption of the resolution for that five-year park plan.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution as presented, which acknowledges a public hearing was held and adopts a city-of-Cairby five-year park plan.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving to possible first reading of ordinance amendment number 370. Larry, do you have anything to say about that?
No, this is one that Devin mentioned earlier and that the ordinance committee's been working on a number of ordinance revisions, this being the first one that'll come forward for a first reading. I don't know if there's anybody in the questions, I'll go count.
I have one question. Did you think I was going to have one? How are you going to measure the sound that the property line are 25 feet past?
Judgment of the city police and the ordinance enforcement officer.
You don't think we should have a decibel reading limit in there? I'm just, I'm asking because I, I don't know, because I may hear something less than you or them or in all places, so I don't know. It's just my only thought when I read through this was that.
Yeah, I understand. We go through that every time in our discussion in terms of, you know, how are we going to measure it? It's like, you know, we're going to have some discussion about dog barking, et cetera.
Right.
It really gets to be somewhat subjective and we've historically, or most recently, said that we need two people to confirm it, that being someone from the police department and the ordinance enforcement officer, yeah, to try to deal with it. Because the reality, we can put the DB number in there, we have that in some other cases where we've got sign ordinances, et cetera, that have got to withstand so many miles per hour wind.
Right.
The reality is, from a practical perspective, we don't have the equipment to go out and measure it more. So I'd be in favor.
Do you care if I jump in here? The first sentence in paragraph G, the following shall be prima facie evidence of unnecessary noise. The definition of that is based on the first impression, except it is correct until proven otherwise. So it puts the onus on the person making the noise. They've got to prove that it's not disturbing somebody else.
Okay.
It's based on first impression of the officer, be it police officer, ordinance officer.
No, there isn't. I asked about the decibel, two reasons, but because there isn't, you can get a fairly inexpensive measuring device, but also everyone knows neighbors are neighbors and sometimes they have issues with other neighbors and they look for things to nitpick on.
Yeah.
That's all. There can be, could be, become a.
Yeah, and I think we're certainly open that if it becomes an issue, that we're just not able to resolve an issue because we haven't measured it, then maybe we need to visit doing that.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only thing I saw when I read through it.
I move an ordinance amendment number 370 regarding noise, and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Cary ordains, Perry City Code Section 670.03G is repealed and the following is substituted in its place instead. 670.03 noise, G, the following shall be prima facie evidence of unnecessary noise, radios, television sets, musical instruments, and similar devices operating, playing, or permitting the operation or playing of any radio, television, phonograph, drum, musical instrument, sound amplifier, or similar device which produces or amplifies sound. One, in such a manner as to create a noise disturbance across a real property boundary. Two, in such a manner as to create a noise disturbance at 50 feet, 15 meters from such device when operated in or on a motor vehicle, on a public right-of-way, or public space, or in a boat, or on public water. Three, in such manner, such a manner as to create a noise disturbance to any person other than the operator of the device when operated by any passenger on a common carrier. Four, repairing, rebuilding, modifying, or testing any motor vehicle, motorcycle, or motorboat in such a manner as to cause noise disturbance across a residential area, property boundary, shall be prima facie evidence of unnecessary noise. H, and these are the real additions, by the way, that we've put in, this ordinance permits excessive, prohibits, excuse me, prohibits excessive noise when that interrupts your neighbor's peace and quiet between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. More specifically, in residential areas, the noise from your home cannot exceed 25 feet from the property line between these hours. I want to handle it for a second. Reference fireworks ordinance number 374-692.01 for exceptions. Needs to be an addition in that. I, construction noise due to the erection, including excavating, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building, the excavation and or grating of streets, highways, or private property is prohibited other than between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. J, no person shall allow a dog in their care, which by loud, frequent, or habitual barking, yelping, or howling causes annoyance to the people of the neighborhood. Reference 612.04A.5. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from the date of publication.
We have a motion from Larry, a second from Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Just to comment, ordinance, fireworks ordinance that I referenced in one of the ones that's in the.
I heard you. Thank you. Sorry.
In the queue for reading in the future.
Yep. No, that's perfect. You did it and it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you, ordinance committee, once again. Done a great job. Looking now for any other business that may come before council. Any other public comment from anyone in attendance? Any council discussions, observations? Items for our next agenda? Ready? Ready.
Possible adoption of ordinance number 370 regarding noise, number two. Amendment to personnel policy, three. Possible adoption of the poverty exemption resolution, and four, possible first reading of ordinance number 374 regarding fireworks.
So possible adoption of the ordinance that was just read?
Yes.
And possible amendment for the personnel policy. First reading of 374 and what was the other?
Poverty exemption resolution.
Oh, the poverty exemption. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned, 8:25.